Give me the holders back in order. Um, are there any amendments?
Okay, uh, Mrs. Chairman, um, on, on page four. On, say, class seven, temporary license, beer license. Uh, rather than saying per day, put down, uh, delete that per day and say per event.
On the motion?
Uh, no, 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 wait, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, twenty dollars per day, not to exceed hundred dollars per event.
So on the motion, the motion is twenty dollars per day, not to exceed one hundred dollars per event?
Right.
On the motion? Without objection, so ordered.
Okay, on, uh, number ten two. You said temporary general license is what?
Mr. Largan, what is a temporary general license?
Uh, I, I have John Garrido, who's the supervisor of the, uh, wait, I mean, the, uh, ABC license who...
Okay, so, so, what, what does temporary general license mean, uh?
Mr. Garrido, go ahead and just, uh, answer the gentleman's question. What is a temporary general license?
Class, class ten.
Class ten.
Um, thank you very much, Senator. The temporary general is actually comprised of all alcoholic beverages that there is available. That would include beer, any hard liquor, and wine as well.
Well, uh, that's... I don't know, uh, reasonable, what is more reasonable, more or less like, uh, maybe fifty dollar, fifty dollars not to exceed hundred dollars per event?
Is that your motion, Ms. Speaker?
Rather than per day, it will be changed to per event, and say, maybe, since you're talking about beer, uh, hard liquor, like wine, and scots, and whiskey, so maybe fifty dollars per day, not to exceed hundred dollars per event.
That'd be fine.
On the motion? On the motion to change class ten temporary general license from one hundred dollars to fifty dollars per event, not to exceed one hundred dollars, I'm sorry, fifty dollars per day, not to exceed one hundred dollars per event? On the motion? Without objection, so ordered. Are there any other motions on this section? If there are not, we are now on section six, I'm sorry, Senator Pangolinan?
Um, the, the mobile license, these are all brand-new licenses, are they, so there's no current charge for a limousine service?
No.
No? Not at all?
That is, that is correct. We are trying to implement that limousine license, um, with the board of, uh, the ABC Board. Um, uh, right now, um, I believe we're hearing, um, these licenses, and we're trying to get them through the board, but as of today, um, uh, there's no, we haven't charged.
But you have, have you received any public input?
I think, uh, for, for, for the license, I think it's already law.
This mobile business license?
Yes.
I thought you said there's no, currently no license?
There, we haven't, uh, I, I believe it's before the board, for them to get approval.
Which board?
For their license.
Which board?
The ABC Board.
Okay, oh, this is a license to sell liquor in the limousine?
In a limousine.
It's not for a limousine service?
No.
Oh, that was my question, there's, okay. All right, there is a fee for a limousine service?
Yes, I believe there is.
And this is for, for the entire year?
Right, I, I believe this section is, uh, related to alcohol.
Pursuant to the new?
Right, this whole section.
All, all related to alcohol, dispensing and, and, okay. And how did you determine the cost of the license? What was the kinda, did you compare it to other jurisdictions, or did you, did you, uh, what was the basis?
That was, uh, the recommendation by the ABC Board, uh, from the research that they did back in the States. That was the recommendation from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Uh, the chairman, as well as other members, apparently, from what I understand, had made some research themselves. Uh, as a matter of fact, it was originally more than that, that they were asking for.
All right, so this is, this is based on some other jurisdictions? George, did you have something to add?
Yes, sir, may I add that they charged like three hundred dollars for the first hour, plus, I think in addition, one hundred per hour for this, this kind of service.
Okay.
Some of the investigators, uh, I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, yeah.
To give you a basis of how they, they assess and charge you. So this is, you know, what they normally charge a customer.
And what was the, did the board have a public hearing on this fees?
No, sir.
No, so... So they just decided to put the fee in, and they would have approved it without a public hearing, or?
Well, sir, the Alcohol Beverage Control Board, uh, didn't get the opportunity to have that hearing.
Okay.
Uh, we've had problems, um, trying to get the board together.
Trying to get a call.
So, in the final analysis, uh, we had a meeting with Senator, uh, Palacios, and, uh, that's what they recommended.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Senator Palacios?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, for clarification on that, I'm, I'm holding, I have a copy of Bill sixty-seven, which actually deal, standing alone regarding this issue. And in fact, even the, uh, it doesn't have three categories of fees here, it just has a mobile license at five hundred dollars, that's what we agreed, that's on Bill sixty-seven, and that's what I like to do the amendment. And at the end of this chapter, I like to offer, of course, a new section that define what is mobile license and, because there's an existing law, actually, that authorized this. Now, the only thing that's holding the implementation of this program, and this is, this should have been implemented about two years ago, is that the rules and regulations have not yet been implemented by the ABC. But then, uh, in that meeting that we had, it was recommended, of course, by the ABC Board, to adopt the rules and regulations applicable and enforceable, uh, to own sale license. So that that way, we link it instead of having the triple A on the rules and regulations, because the law already to license is there. Of course, the fee, that's your discussion, but, uh, Bill sixty-seven is actually addressed that with just one, one fee, which is five hundred dollars for a mobile license, and a mobile license can be a limousine, a chartered van, or a chartered bus. And it, it defines the premises that it can be consumed only within the vehicle, and the amendment would, would explain that at the end of this chapter, which I would offer, which is part of Bill six, essentially, the entire Bill sixty-seven, uh, except the legislative findings and those things. So the amendment that I would like to offer at this would define what is mobile license and, according, of course, to the public law that's already been passed two years ago, but with the fee that's, uh, that's picked at five hundred dollars flat for a mobile And that's, that's the history of this, is, is, it's only the fee that's remaining to be adopted and the rules and regulations, but ABC already agreed at five hundred dollars, and the own-sale rules and regulations for own-sale beer would, would apply to the limousine, to the mobile license, I mean, not limousine license, but mobile license, so that it includes a van, chartered van, chartered limousine, and bus, whatever.
So Senator, is your, are you proposing an amendment to change all of these figures on, under mobile license to five hundred?
Uh, actually, right, uh, right there at class twelve, for example, you just say mobile license, and then you draw a line and say five hundred dollars per year, and then strike out those things, because at the end, it would define who, you know, how you issue mobile license. So you issue mobile license to limousine, to chartered van, and, and, uh, I guess the chartered transportation as defined in, in the law that was passed two years ago, that was referenced here. So it would be only just a mobile license, not, not mobile license for limousine, mobile license for charter, it doesn't have like that. I think we agreed at just one figure, which is five hundred dollars for a mobile license that can be used by a limousine, by a van, by a bus, but it is the vehicle that's licensed, not the person and not the business. So that if that vehicle is down for some reason, at some shop, it, it's not transferable, and those things are spelled out in the amendment, which is actually the, the substance of Bill sixty-seven.
So, so Senator, are you proposing an amendment to this section?
Yeah, with respect to the, uh, to the fee that mobile license be five hundred dollars and strike out the limousine, the ABC on the twelve.
All right, so on the motion, the motion is to place five hundred dollars for all mobile licenses, regardless of type, and strike out A, B, and C, as well as D. Is that what you're saying? Senator Palacios?
That, that's what, that's what I'm saying, actually, because I'm just repeating Bill sixty-seven, but...
All right.
That, that can be adjusted, but I, I just want to point out that there need, there need only be one license to cover all.
So not to misconstrue, make it clear, you're saying to put five hundred dollars on class twelve mobile license, and to strike all sections below it, which is A, B, C, and D, correct?
Yes, because all those different vehicles will have to get a mobile license.
Understood. Senator Shimizu, did you have, uh, did you want to speak on the motion?
Is there any, um, definition in any of the laws, any parts of the act that defines mobile license? Because the proposal is just to put mobile license and don't operationalize the definition of what is a mobile license, limousine service and so forth and so forth. If the proposal is to remove that, is there any other provision that defines that, so at least?
Senator Palacios, did you, did you have, um, point of information?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I don't know whether, actually, that would be the amendment at the end of this, uh, which, which would be a new section at the end of chapter six, that would define, and if you, if you want me to read it just for purpose of information, as we...
So you're telling, basically, you're telling the body that you were going to proffer the amendment to define what a mobile license is after we've...
Let me, it's just a short sentence, if you can read it.
Go ahead.
And it says here, of course, uh, section thirty-two, twenty-eight of chapter three, article two, title eleven, of course, this is all from, from, uh, Bill sixty-seven. It says here, "A mobile license shall be a general on-sale license only, and shall authorize the licensee to sell alcoholic beverages to passengers, clients, and customers for consumption only on the premises of a limousine or bus, meeting the requirements of sixteen GCA, uh, section one eight one, two one. The license shall be restricted to vehicles owned and registered by the licensee, and shall not be transferable."
All right.
And then all, all rules and regulations, of course, will be applicable as it is on own license.
Senator Shimizu, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to ask that question, because we're delineating the description of what a mobile. Now, let me, so, if it says mobile license, let's take, for example, one of the things that I can visualize is when you're carrying, you're carrying passengers, right, for business purposes. Let's take, for example, when you have, I see going down to the beach, you know, a pickup full of our Japanese tourists to go on a dive, is that a mobile license? Um, it's a pickup limousine, granted, it's not the, you know, the shiny, but it's, it's still, uh, a transporting of, uh, passengers, and I'm sure that they include, so, I just wanted to ask that question, to make sure that we, we, um, define it, uh, at where, whatever the section will be, we define it so that it does not necessarily leave it up to the imagination to be charging, uh, you know, uh, five hundred dollars for transporting, let's say, on a ecotour and, and so forth, and that's a limousine service. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Espaldón?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just, point of clarification, I, I, in listening to Senator Shimizu and Senator Palacios, uh, I'm of the opinion that Senator Shimizu is talking about a license for a vehicle in itself, while Senators, actually, that's Senator Shimizu, Senator Palacios, basically, for the purpose, the purpose of a mobile license is to sell, or to serve alcohol on a moving vehicle. Is that correct? I mean, that's, that's, we're not talking about a, a, a license for a vehicle, a recreation vehicle of any kind, it's for the specific purpose, so that allows them to serve alcoholic beverages on that vehicle. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want a clarification, thank you.
Chairman, just point of information, since you mentioned my name?
Well, uh, let me go to...
Now, I just want to ask, that charter...
Senator Shimizu, Senator Shimizu, uh, Senator Munya Barnes, and then we'll go back to you, okay?
Thank you.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, though I appreciate the mover of the amendment in reference to, uh, his proposed amendment, um, I have concerns, because the, the proposal that we have in front of us regarding the, um, I guess, the authorization to use alcohol, I mean, to have alcohol beverages on these different, uh, models of vehicle, it, it leaves me to understand that the breakdown here explains, uh, a more detailed explanation of what the vehicle is, whether it be the limousine itself versus the, the charter van of, of a ten, whether it be a ten passenger, a fifteen passenger, then up after the fifteen passenger heads on to the bus. So for me, my only concern, though, I appreciate, and I have no qualms to his future amendment that he's going to put in in reference to the definition, I, I'd like to leave the class twelve in as far as the breakdown of the vehicles and what it's, and what we have before us, so I guess that would be, uh, an objection, though I appreciate what the, the author has to say, I'd like to leave the breakdown of the vehicles, because it, it gives, uh, uh, a true definition of what the vehicle is and what is utilized, what, what the utilization is for.
So you're, you're amending the amendment to leave all the existing breakdown A, B, C, and D, uh, but his amendment is still to put five hundred dollars per?
No, I, I, I'd still keep the, the amendments, uh, because there is a differences between the passengers that carry these, uh, the passengers that are carried in these vehicles.
So you're objecting to the amendment?
That's why I said...
All right, that's what, all right, there is an objection to the amendment, is there any further, uh, comments? Senator Palacios? So you withdraw the amendment? All right, so there, there is no further amendment on the floor at this time. Senator Munya Barnes, do you have any further comments? All right, um, there being none, um, really quickly, um, progress of the chair real quick, um, just wanted to ask Mr. Largan, um, under this, each one of them, A and D, uh, you have per vehicle, but B and C do not, was that a typographical error, was it was inadvertently omitted? Because on limousine services per vehicle, a charter van does not say per vehicle, neither does charter, uh, charter vehicle van, charter vehicle van, and B and C does not say per vehicle, so was that an omission?
It's, it is an omission.
So if there's a motion from a member from the body to put per vehicle, Senator Shizaki?
Yeah, Detective Mr. Chair, let's go ahead and make a motion to include per vehicle in sections, subsection B and C.
Okay, on the motion? Without objection, so ordered. Are there any further comments on this section? Senator Juan Pat, and then Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to, to find out, since this legislation actually has been, you know, enacted, uh, over two years ago, has, uh, has any one of these vehicles, whatever, been in operation and actually selling alcohol without a license?
The question is whether there's ever been a, a vehicle license issued for the consumption of alcohol since the enactment of this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, so with these fees now, would, it would, they would be authorized now, then they'll come in and get a license, and they'll be authorized to, to sell then alcohol on these vehicles?
Yes, ma'am, once this is passed, then we will start accepting.
That's when the law will go into effect.
Okay, all right, Senator Pangolinan, then Senator Munya Barnes?
Yeah, I just have a question, then. If I run a limousine service and I have five limousines, do I, if I only want one license, do that, do I have to designate that vehicle, or can I rotate it? Can I decide this week, this limousine's the one that's going to serve alcohol, next week it's going to be that limousine, but they can't do it at the same time?
No, no, sir, the intent of it was to, was its license per vehicle, so if that vehicle's down, then that license also become dormant until such time that that vehicle is up.
Is up?
Yes, sir.
Is that in the rules and records?
That is what the ABC Board intended for, for the fees to be, because that's the original law says per vehicle.
Okay, so, but, but, again, it's, that's nowhere, though, does it say that I have to, you know, that I, I have to designate that vehicle, it's not in the rules and regs?
It, it, no, it's not in the rules and reg, it is in the law, the original law that was passed about two, three years ago?
Right.
That it is, that each vehicle will be licensed, will be, will have an alcohol license. So if you have a fleet of five, and one is down, all five will have alcohol license. When one is down, then that license will be dormant until such time that your, that veh, that vehicle's up, or if you have an additional vehicle that is not licensed, the rules and regulation, you can transfer that license from that vehicle to another vehicle.
That's what I mean, I can...
Yes, sir.
I can basically rotate my vehicles, which ones can sell alcohol?
Yes, sir, you can do that.
Okay, all right.
Uh, Senator Munya Barnes now?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the, I think the, uh, the question I have here on hand is based on the, the proposed licenses that are going to, I mean, fees that are going to be imposed, is that in any violation to the open container law? Is there an exemption? Just, just a point of clarification on that one. Uh, was it, was it amended in, based on the open container law, because no alcoholic beverages were licensed for that purpose? I just want to double-check for the record to make sure that we're not in violation of any specific laws here. But no, 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 basically, because...
Point of information, Senator Kama?
Actually, that's what I'll clarify, yes, it is, it, it, that's the whole, there, there was, again, amendments made into the law about the open container, and that's why, information-wise, also, it's also legal, it's been legal since the beginning of time here. And I guess it was pattern after a, one of the quirks about Guam law, if you have a trailer, you know, those, those movable homes, that, that's always been legal to have a, 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 open, open alcohol container, and of course, Guam is only thirty miles by four to twelve, so it, it was something I always found kind of funny as a quirk in Guam law, but you could have a, again, a trailer, trailer home, and a moving trailer home that's hooked up to a vehicle, and be legal to, uh, open and consume alcoholic beverages. Anyway, point of information.
You're welcome. Senator Palacios? All right, that's fine. Any other comments on this section? Senator Espaldón?
Uh, yeah, just again, I got a little confused, I'm sorry, on the, on the last section, a, and you, uh, the question, I think, was basically if you had a fleet, essentially, and you only wanted to designate one of the vans to, to be a licensed, uh, carrier, so that, so to speak, right? Uh, and it, you said if it goes down, then license becomes dormant, but then in the next sentence, you, and then, and then it's, and then it came across when you spoke again, that, no, you could actually rotate that license amongst several vehicles, and I'm, I'm just not sure what, what I heard.
What I meant is that it's up to you, the licensee, if you decide that you want to keep that license within that vehicle, that's up to you, but the license, you cannot operate that license unless you come in and transfer that license from that vehicle that is down to another one.
So, so they would have to come in to you first?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You, you have to, because...
Yeah, no, that's what I was wondering about that.
Yeah, if you, if you take that license and we go out and find you down, down at Two Lovers Point, and we take a look at the license versus the registration, and it doesn't add up to, you know, then we're going to cite you.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I was a little confused, thank you.
All right, on section five, all right, concludes discussion on section five. Uh, again, ladies and gentlemen, we need to, um, as much as possible move the, all these folks have to be at Revit Tax tomorrow. Uh, section six. Senator Pangolinan, just really briefly explain the, uh, section.
I understand you want me to explain that thirty-six thirteen section, Senator? Okay, what's been happening here is that we have been, the administrator, as well as the ABC alcohol, the Alcohol Beverage Control Board, has been suspending licenses, and the government of Guam is losing out on that thing. What I propose with the, with the ABC Board is a win-win situation. The licensee, when they are cited for any violation of the alcoholic beverage control, can continue to operate, but instead of a suspension, we're going to penalize them until such a time as you go down, that if the licensee continued to violate those alcoholic beverages, then the administrator or the Alcohol Beverage Control Board has no other recourse but to either suspend or revoke the license.
This is all related to the alcohol laws? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to know, be very clear on what it was. Okay, thank you.
On, on section six? No further questions? Senator Espaldón?
Just real quickly, um, now, I, I realize that there are probably, uh, a lot of different provisions in this chapter, uh, which, which regulate the, the alcohol consumption, alcohol selling, uh, is that correct? So you're saying that just for one violation, what's the most petty violation that anybody could violate?
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm just, under the ABC, uh, regulation, rules and regulations, what is the most petty violation, uh, that, that a bar or an establishment could, could violate?
Waitresses or managers having no ABC card?
That, okay, that would be the most petty?
That's the most petty one, yes, sir.
That's not even petty, they should have one.
And the one the most extreme is the operation pass of the operating hour.
Okay.
After hours, we call it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
On section six? Nothing else, section seven, want to go ahead and explain that again?
Sir, uh, under the Greyhound rules and regulations, um, the, the, for, this for the dogs in the...
All right, any other questions on the dogs? Inoxen, that goes to the dogs. Section eight? Go ahead, please, just explain us, explain if you would, please, section by section, real briefly, what it exactly entails. Section eight?
Section, the uniform filing fee for, this is regarding, uh, filing of UCC, Senator?
UCC?
UCC, secured, uh, secured, uh, transactions. Uh, this is pertaining to secured transaction, Senator, and so, under the Uniform Commission Code, right now, we're only charging, uh, three dollars, uh, for the recordation of the lien of the, uh, financial institutions or of any other creditor.
Now, i- is that true for all of these sections, section eight, nine, ten, pretty, used to be, appears to be uniform in their appearance here, is that the same thing to all of them?
Yes, sir, it used to be uniformly, uh, for the filing of the secured transaction amendment, uh, release or termination thereof, the fee is just three dollars, we're raising it to ten dollars.
So, on sections eight, nine, ten, and eleven, appear to be pretty much the same dealing with UCC, are there any questions on these sections? If none, we'll go to section twelve, sir, would you go ahead and explain that as well?
It is bottom of date six, top of date seven. Date seven. No, you're looking at the wrong document, please, I'm sorry. Section ninety-four oh seven two. This appears to be the same thing in the UCC from the three to ten, and ninety-four oh seven, subsection two. This is the differences in fees, that's what you guys changed, right?
This is the differences in fees, that's what you guys changed, right?
I don't know, section, section twelve doesn't seem to be appropriate, but section...
Senator, this refers to, uh, uh, information requests or searches being made by the financial institutions. So if, if they're inquiring whether or not a certain person or, or business entity has any, has any outstanding indebtedness with, uh, any creditor, then this is the type of information that they request. This is the type of information that they request, and we, we... Sometimes, in addition to the information, they do request also for, uh, copies of any existing liens of any. So for that type, um, we, we are asking to, uh, be able to, uh, maintain, maintain the, uh, the same charges that we, we currently do now for the copies and the succ- the succeeding, uh, pages for the copies. But we do, uh, want to raise the fee from, uh, existing three dollars to ten dollars.
No questions on that section? Oh, Senator Pangolino?
I just want you to, uh, to state for the record that all of the information here, uh, that you're allowing access of outs- of individuals, requesting them, they're all based on publicly filed documents. You're not violating any kind of privacy act on the individual. You're not gonna release any, uh, income tax information or anything. These are all liens, judgments maybe, that may be on file with the department. These are all public records. There are no...
Yes, sir.
Private records at all that the government will release in its possession to these outside individuals. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. All of these are public information.
All right.
Nothing else on section thirteen?
Uh, let me see, is this, is that a new section that, or is this, uh, what it is right now?
It's amending sixty-two oh one.
What, what is the annual retail license now?
Um, the change here is from five hundred to one thousand dollars for wholesale license.
No, no, this is the annual retail license.
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars, what?
Still stays the same, there's no change. The only change is the section C from five hundred to a thousand.
Annual retail license then?
Wholesale, wholesale.
Yeah. What if you, yeah?
Yeah, the retail stays the same.
Could you probably raise it to, to a hundred dollars? Wouldn't that be more reasonable? You know, for item A, and, and also an item B, the same thing, annual vending machine retail license?
Is that a motion to change annual retail license to a one hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Why did you not propose a change to that?
Yeah, provide, sort of, uh, give us a reason why you, you have not changed it.
Well, we, we have had many, many meetings and everything else to, to increase the fees from forty dollars, like for example, depending on the annual revenue of the business, like a, a person selling, uh, snow cone out there is forty dollars. A big retail store making over five million a month is forty dollars. There's such a big inequity there. So we were trying to go on a scale that somebody making up to, uh, at least two hundred thousand, it would remain forty. Anything over two hundred thousand would be two hundred and fifty dollars. Anything over half a million should be five hundred. Anything over a million should be a thousand, so, so, so it's the disparity doesn't exist. And, and again, this has been commingled, and I apologize for us looking like it was just, oh, this seems to be, uh, commingled with everything, but from dog license to liquor, and so, but having said that, the, the, the approach that we have been doing is we're trying to, to, to give you all the figures of how many people were making up to a certain level, so that this way that that disparity does not exist, Senators.
Okay, well, I'm, hi George.
Hi.
Oh, uh, we're on page seven, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, section thirteen?
Correct.
Okay, and the annual retail license is forty dollars, and that's presently what it is, right?
Correct.
I just gasped, my car, it cost me forty-five dollars.
Exactly.
Right, and, and I, I don't, I think it's a hundred dollars reasonable, wouldn't it be?
Well, we have, we have a different scale that we had proposed for...
Well, you don't have it on scale though here.
Apparently the scales...
We didn't use that scale, and we, uh, a hundred dollars seems reasonable for, um, the, the charge to operate a business on Guam. For that business, it is very reasonable. Um, the reason why we didn't look at it is because we had other, uh, ways to, to charge that we, we didn't, uh, implement, so, uh, the hundred dollars to, is reasonable for the department to, uh, charge.
Just a second, go ahead.
Okay, so, well, anyway, I, I wanna make, uh, an amendment on A and B, and also for the B, make it a hundred dollars as well.
Okay, so on the amendment to change A to...
Hundred?
One hundred.
And B to, to one hundred.
One hundred. On the amendment, Senator Koval?
Yeah, I, I just want to be very careful with these amendments. Uh, and, you know, first of all, me being a, I, I know all aspects of this. Uh, on the annual, the, the comment that was made earlier by, by the representative of Rev and Tax on the annual retail license, I, I think if you were to talk to any, any one of the major retailers, obviously, there's a, there's a neighborhood store, and a neighborhood store has their volume, and then you got, and, and I, I don't think there would be any, uh, qualms from the business community basing it on, you mentioned a scale. Now, I think that's something that we should really review. I know there's been an amendment at a hundred dollars, but obviously there's, there are companies that are, and retailing at over twenty, thirty, forty, fifty million plus, and then there are the retailers that are, gosh, they're, they're barely making ends meet, and they're, they're probably at twelve thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars a year in sales. And, and again, I, I feel perfectly, uh, uh, at ease where, where we were to look at this annual retail license. You made mention of a certain scale, that's something to look at, and, and with this particular scale, um, doing further evaluation on the retail side, and hopefully coming back to it, and I'd like to have it come back to it, you know, with the movement of this, of this particular provision here, but I, I, obviously whether you move it to forty to one hundred, it will, in some businesses make hardly, it would be insignificant, and then for some other businesses, it will be very, very significant, and that's why I'm, I'm, I'm kinda treading on why I'm gonna object to just that both A and B, uh, being at the same, uh, dollar level, because I think this is something that we, we, we could, we should look at more carefully, and, and with that, make a decision as a body. As for the annual vending machine license, I do know, you have companies, actually, there's two soft drink companies, and, and if a vending machine, i- it doesn't dispense like a store either, and if you're to do it at a hundred bucks per machine, obviously, it's, it's gonna have a major impact, because vending machines do not make the same sales as even a mom and pop store, and mom and pop stores don't make even close to what you would see in either one of the major retail supermarkets here, or, uh, one of the disco, uh, one of the big, um, um, retail establishments. So that, that, if, if, I'm, I'm gonna have to object to this thing, but not objecting to the motion, uh, towards the, uh, the increase, but, but objecting so that we could come back to it and, and come up with a more reasonable, uh, fee schedule or, or license schedule that would take into consideration the, the, the size, uh, volume of businesses in both the retail and in vending machines, as well as, um, um, seeing what could be apportioned out, uh, and what, like, again, I, I feel a, a fifty million dollar business could pay more than a hundred bucks, but at the same time, I don't know about mom and pop, whether a hundred bucks will a little bit be a, will be too, uh, too significant. So again, I'm gonna make an objection, but I, I would, I would like to reserve the right, maybe we can come back into this thing and, and have some further discussions. I would love to see, uh, the proposals that have been, that you supposedly have ready. I wish you could have done it, uh, in this schedule. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Blas?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Art, along those lines from, you know, good senator from Mitie. Do you have those proposals with regards to?
I believe we have it. Uh, I just wanna make a comment going back to Senator Koval's, um, um, putting us, uh, uh, fee schedules together. We just have to make sure we close the loopholes, because we've seen in the past where we allow, uh, an exemption for certain people at a certain, amount, that sometimes they come up with a creative way of getting everybody their license under that amount through getting more licenses, uh, for different sections of the retail maybe, or, um, we just need to look at how, uh, the minds work and how people come up with creative ways to fit themselves in the lowest possible, um, um, settings for these, so that they don't pay, you know, a hu- five hundred million dollar company can divide their company into five hundred ways and pay a cheaper, um, uh, license fees. And it's been done, same with the, like, the Dave Santas Act. Uh, that was supposed to be for one business, but, you know, you got husband and wife, they split the business, half gets that, and they get a hundred thousand dollar exemption.
Sure, and I recognize this, and I, I, you know, I tend to agree here with regards to looking at the annual retail license. You know, when, when you've got a mom and pop store, you know, and, you know, this, this mom and pop is just barely making it, you know, on, on selling produce and, and whatnot, and, uh, probably only making at ma- maybe fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year, probably at best, and paying the same amount for a retail license as, as you would a major conglomerate, you know, some, some business that's, that's, that's making in the millions. Um, I think this is one, an opportunity that, uh, here is we can, we can start to separate and as far as disparity. And I recognize, yes, we, we all know, Art, that, uh, you know, once the laws, people are gonna start to find creative ways, and we've seen this with the Dave Santas Act, but I think that also, as a result of what we've seen before, you know, we, there, there, there's ways to be able to, to, to capture the best costs. I mean, even if you, you, you split it up into different companies, then we get two different individuals paying more taxes. So I don't know if that's it, if, if that's bad at all, quite honestly, because we're not going to, we're not going to decrease any total amount as, as, as well as, I mean, we should probably add it up, add it up a little bit more. So if you've got that, you know, um, you know, I'm, I'm just interested in looking at that. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, uh, for the benefit of the body, the documents on the proposed changes and the tiered system is being copied right now, and we'll distribute that in a minute. Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we have the folks from Revenue Tax here, I wanted to ask them, I didn't see in their proposal coming from the governor, any, uh, action that would eliminate the wholesale tax rebates or the exemptions to, uh, businesses on the island. I'm really surprised about it, because the governor was very vocal about this over the last year or so. Could Mr. Loggins please explain, uh...
This, uh, point of order, Mr. Chairman, now, I, I think I, I do have a motion that has to do with...
That's correct.
Changing license, uh, fee.
That's correct. Um, Senator Guthers, um, there is a time for that, uh, right now, though we are speaking on the motion to change the figures, uh, on sections, just a moment, B and C, I'm sorry, A and B from forty dollars and twenty dollars to a hundred dollars each. So it probably would be appropriate for you to bring that question after we dispose of the motion.
When we get to C, on the motion?
On the motion, yeah, uh...
Okay, I'll, I'll wait till later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that's fine. Uh, Senator, I'm sorry, let me see real quick. Senator Ishizaki is recognized, and then after that, that'll be Respicio and Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know what, in talking to George from Revenue Tax, I, I think I wanna propose this amendment to, to this section, and that's on the annual retail license fee. We should probably keep it at forty for, um, businesses that have a gross sales of less than a hundred thousand dollars. As one provision, and if you want, I, you want me to continue on part A, or should we put a part D and E?
I'm sorry, so, are you proffering an amendment at this time to the amendment?
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, Tony? Do you want me to? Mr. Mr. Chairman, um, Senator Ishizaki is going to offer another amendment, so what I'll do is to withdraw my amendment as far as A and B, and he'll make the, uh, uh, motion to, to amend.
Okay.
So I withdraw my amendment.
The motion is withdrawn, um, at this time, we are still on the section. Senator Ishizaki, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my amendment would be as follows, that we retain the forty dollar, uh, annual retail license fee for retail businesses that have a gross sales of less than one hundred thousand dollars, and then to charge a hundred dollars for those retail businesses that gross between a hundred thousand dollars and nine nine nine, nine nine nine, per year. And the third part of this would be to charge one thousand dollars for retail licenses for gross sales in excess of one million dollars.
Mr. Chairman, can we get that in writing? That's more than a couple words.
All right, uh, we'll go ahead and, um, briefly take a break and get that. Um, can you please put that in writing within the next couple of minutes, Senator Ishizaki? Camille Hall will be in recess. Camille Hall is back in order. Uh, we have an amendment by Senators Ishizaki, uh, reference to this section. Uh, Senator Ishizaki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I just, uh, I'm gonna read off the amendment. It's a fifty dollar fee for, um, for retail outlets that gross le- fifty thousand dollars or less. And then between, for retail outlets that gross between fifty thousand and one dollar, up to one hundred thousand dollars, the, the fee should be one hundred dollars annually, and then raise the fee annually to two hundred fifty dollars for retail gross sales of between one hundred thousand and one dollar, up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then charge a retail license fee for one thousand dollars for gross sales between two hundred fifty thousand and one dollar to two million dollars. And then charge a two thousand dollar retail license fee for, uh, gross sales in excess of two million dollars.
Okay, so for clarification purposes, all figures on the left columns are, represent gross sales?
That's correct.
Okay. On the motion, Senator Palacios?
Uh, this is more or less a question, uh, with Chairman. A business license, of course, is issued at the starting point for a business. Let's say July, I mean, I think July first, and what, how do you, how, what amount would be used as a basis for a charge of a new license that has not yet experienced any gross sales?
Yeah, Mr. Loggins was just clarifying that. Mr. Loggins?
What we usually do is we have a look back period. Um, we looked at last year's, um, um, fee, uh, gross receipts, and we would base ourself on that, so probably a person is just starting, doesn't have any, uh, it would come under the, uh...
The minimal.
The minimal. And then the following year, if he makes two hundred fifty million dollars, then it's the...
So there is no, no additional charge, uh, after the, the, that year, at the expiration of the, the, let's say, the forty dollar license? And then it ended up that actually, I, at the end of that license year, I gross to the amount that actually would got me a hundred dollar license fee? Would there be an adjustment when I come back for a second year license?
Uh, 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 when they renew it, it would change to that new fee.
So that's how it's gonna, it's gonna go?
Right.
But, okay.
Prior year.
So on the second year, for example, I fall again below, then it wouldn't benefit me. You just follow me, the...
Right.
It will follow the, 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 the year in total.
Right, and the succeeding year.
Will follow me for the next...
Right.
License, uh, fee.
Right, that's correct.
Determination, okay, okay. A- a- as long as there's a formula like that, then you'll be, you'll be okay. Thank you.
Senator Koval?
Actually, the question I have for the author of the amendment, I'm just noting that representatives from, um, Rev and Tax passed out this sheet, uh, earlier to all the members of the, of the legislative body, and I guess these were the, the numbers that originally, the, the scaling of, of retail licenses, these are, are the numbers that came about, uh, and were, were actually contemplated by Rev and Tax, but were not provided to the legislature. And in it, there, there is again the first designation of a dollar to two hundred fifty thousand in sales for a hundred bucks, uh, for the retail license. for the retail license, $250,001 to $500,000 for those sales, $200, $500,001 to $1 million, at $400, $1 million to $2 million at $800. And then anything exceeding $2 million was at $1,000. And I just note that there's been a different scaling from the proposed amendment from the Senator Ishizaki. So I guess the question I have for Senator Ishizaki, this is not at all the same as what was originally contemplated by Revenue Tax, so is there a basis to how you broke this, this dollar figure down?
Senator Ishizaki? That's a good question, Senator Cavill. And no, that was a consensus derived from a short group of advisors. So to answer your question, no.
Maybe that group, is there, was there, in fact, if it was a group, I noticed some members of represent, I would suppose then, that the discussions were between the Senator, the author of the amendment and members of Revenue Tax, correct? Was that the, so, and I see these folks from Revenue Tax with their eyes wide open and their mouths ready to give an explanation. Since, obviously, there have been changes that have been proffered by Revenue Tax officials to the mover of this amendment, and they, they don't reflect at all the numbers I see originally as proffered by Revenue Tax. Can you give me an explanation, any individual from Revenue Tax, and how you came up with these new numbers?
Sir, may I add that I threw that into Senator Ishizaki, in that I, I think we overlooked the fact that there are people like Mary Kay, Avon, people selling those things, and they do less than $50,000 a year, and I think it would be inappropriate to, to, to consider them, you know, in excess of $50,000 to be, so that's why we redid the scale. Is that sufficient?
Well, that's one reason why you could have done it, it's just that there's just so many changes. That's why, so, so it was Mary Kay?
Well, again, to differentiate people doing less than $50,000 and people doing over $100,000, and then we just gradually went into that scale that...
Okay, now that's explanation, is there any other explanation?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyway, that's, I just wanted to get an idea, because there's a big difference. There's a big difference between the originals that was offered, and then of course, this amendment. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Senator Pinkel, and then Senator Raspicio.
I guess the reason why I'm saying something is just to sort of bring to light, I just remembered, my wife just got a license to teach, and she was considered a private contractor. And she's teaching part-time, or she was teaching part-time, and the total amount that she made altogether so far, and I don't, would be maybe around $2,000 this year? And less, less than, probably less than $2,000 for the entire calendar year 2007. But, let's see, then, of course, with the scale that we have here, an individual like her, or somebody else, like, you know, making less, do 100 to 50,000, she'll, they'll be paying $50.
Sir, that is not a retail license, that is a service license. A service license is only 25.
Whoa, okay, so I'm glad you clarified that.
There's three different licenses, wholesale, retail, and service. Sir, she paid $25 for, she signed a contract, and so I don't know if you determine her as a contractor, because normally a normal contractor is a building contractor, but anyone who signs a contract falls under a category, I guess, of terminology contractor.